Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission's Monday, June 13th, 2022 meeting. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the Commission and staff that are here this evening. To my immediate right is James Fitzsimmons, a Commission member. Next to Jim is Jeff Kohan, also a Commission member. And next to Jeff is Jamie Hine, who is an alternate on the Commission. To my immediate left is JP Van Ooyt, our Vice Chairperson of the Commission. Next to him is Steve Allenson, the Secretary. And next to him at the outside position is David Parent, who is an alternate on the Commission. At the staff table to my left is Cheryl Ann Tubby, our Recording Secretary, and Kevin Pajini, our Town Planner. And I'm Jim Sykes, the Chairperson of the Commission. Our next order of business is to approve minutes. The first is I would take a motion to approve, amend, or correct any the minutes of our Monday, May 9th, 2022. So at this point in time, if Commission members have a motion or would like to make any corrections or additions, I'd entertain that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the May 9th, 2022 Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Moving on, I'd also entertain a motion to either approve, amend, or correct our minutes of a special meeting we had, workshop for Thursday, May 19th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the special meeting workshop format Thursday, May 19th, 2022 for the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone not approve or any abstentions?
Abstention, please.
And if you note, Mr. Allenson abstained. And before we get started with our next order of business, I'd just like to announce that item number one on our agenda, it's a public hearing, special permit residential building for V. Dana Tally at 350 Center Street. That will not be heard this evening. I anticipate it will be heard at our July meeting. Which brings us to our next item on the agenda. It's a public hearing, special permit car wash, G. Gallo, 654 North Colony Road. And Mr. Allenson, if you please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record while the applicant and its representative begin preparing for their presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number 405-22, special permit for Jerry Gallo to construct a car wash facility at 654 North Colony Road, RF40 Zone. We have correspondence from Matthew Brown dated May 23rd, 2022. We have a document with some site plans and stormwater treatment entitled or on the first page it says, "Comment Response Summary." And it was received May 31st, 2022. We have a memorandum from the Department of Engineering dated May 16th, 2022. An inter-office memorandum from Scott Shipman, Junior Engineer, Water and Sewer Division, dated June 2nd, 2022. Correspondence from Attorney Jim Lachlan to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated June 19th, 2022. Correspondence from Attorney Jim Lachlan to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated June 9th, 2022. Correspondence from Timothy Lee to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated June 13th, 2022. Memorandum from Janice Small, Corporation Counsel, dated June 13th, 2022. Correspondence from Matthew Brown to our Town Planner, Kevin Pajini, dated June 13th, 2022. And a set of site plans dated never make it easy to find. Revised date, 5/9/22, 5/26/22, 6/7/22. And I believe that is all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Allenson. If the applicant and/or its representative would please introduce themselves and begin their presentation. And I would just note when you are speaking, if you would get the microphones as close to you as you can so we can pick your voices up on the record. So with that, it's all yours, gentlemen.
Thank you. Jerry Gallo, 15 Shanti Place, Talon, Connecticut.
Good evening. Matt Brown from Barton and La Judas, Professional Engineer.
I'm Jim Lachlan, lawyer in town. My office is on North Main Street here in town for Mr. Gallo. This is a special permit application for a car wash in an RF40 Zone. It is a feel-good application. It's a feel-good application because after decades of being left behind, a building that may 100 years ago have been state-of-the-art and prominent in the community has been left behind in a more demanding market. And we here propose that we update that property now to state-of-the-art. Mr. Gallo runs another car wash operation in Talon, has done well there, not only for himself, but for the town. And he proposes coming to this, our community, for the same purpose. He will do well at the same time that the town of Wallingford will do well. It's also a feel-good application because upon approval, you can be assured that it would, if necessary, withstand judicial scrutiny. All the buzzwords of statute, of your regulations, and case law suggest and show that this application can and should be approved under your regulation and state law. Details are longlisted. But before Mr. Brown gets up and presents, if I could just do some housekeeping matters with you guys. The sign was posted pursuant to your regulations and a copy of it was forwarded with a cover letter to the zoning office. Notice was provided to neighbors as required under your regulations. What I say by buzzwords under statute, under your regulations, are that the three tiers have all been satisfied under law. Number one, it is permitted, this used car wash is permitted under your regulation. Section 4.16.1h specifically names car wash. Number two, and number three, your regulations are satisfied and the proposed use is in keeping with the community for health and safety reasons. That's why you can approve them, you can approve this application. You can rest assured that the regulations and the health and safety have been preserved because we've met with staff on numerous occasions. We had two full roundtable meetings where engineering was there, zoning was there. Amy was there for zoning enforcement. Water Sewer is there for the first roundtable. And Corporation Counsel Janice Small was there for the second roundtable. In addition, your staff, as always, has been commendably available by email and by phone, always welcoming conversation. And Jerry and Amy have spent a lot of time together on the phone to make sure this thing will work, and it will. It just makes sense that we bring this property up to date. It's surrounded by a commercial area. Behind it is the old Eyelet Specialty Corp. building. In front of it is McDonald's and a Taylor rental and a new medical office building. Route 5 is in front of it. To the right is a strip mall and to the south is a restaurant, Lums when I was a kid. Now it's Colony Diner. This begs for a commercial use. We've circulated the application to all different departments. And any comments that have come back have not been negative. They've just provided post-approval suggestions that will be monitored by your staff post-approval. And so you know, Mr. Brown specializes in car washes. That's why he comes to us from Glastonbury and works with Jerry, even though Jerry's from Talon. That's a niche. Yes, I imagine he does other things as well in addition to car washes. But because of his expertise, he's already been able to respond to post-approval recommendations and has started checking off the list that your different departments have asked for. We've complied with all water runoff and environmental regulations. And aesthetically, finally, this outdated building will be redeveloped to a state-of-the-art facility. The only objection that we received is from the competition. It was received by fax today from Attorney Lee, whom I know and like. Had they approached staff like we had, like we have repeatedly, over and over again, to review the regulations, they would have known that a variance is not necessary in this case because we are reducing a non-conforming use. Had they spent the time and had they approached the town sooner than just late this morning, they would have known that, but they didn't. Which brings me to my final housekeeping matter. A variance is not necessary in this case because we are reducing the nonconformity and we are introducing no more nonconformities. This building was built sometime in the 1800s, I'm sure. It certainly predates zoning. So as Janice has reminded me repeatedly, it is a legally nonconforming nonconformity. It's a legal existing nonconformity. What we could do is build a car wash in the existing structure just as it is. And all we'd have to do is get a change of use. Instead, what we're doing is, there's two roads, Route 5 and Old Colony Road. We've taken away any proposed encroachments on the setback along Route 5 and relocated it. Please recall, this is a resubmitted application. We withdrew it last time after meeting with the ZBA and resubmitted it, taking there were two rows between the building and Route 5. And we took the front row of those vacuums and relocated them to the south, eliminated a use that has been operating there for a decade or so. And that's where we're putting that second row, that first row of vacuums, inside the setback. So the setback encroachments along Route 5 is eliminated. On Old Colony Road, which is east, behind the building, we are taking a huge structure and moving it further away from Old Colony Road and reducing its size. The effect is we are decreasing the nonconformity, which means we don't need to go to the ZBA for a variance. We can come directly to you for approval under the Special Permit Regulation without having to get a regulation, without having to get a variance. I believe that's what Janice's memo says. I have not seen it because, again, the objection came in so late. But if you look at my letter dated June 9th, which was last Thursday, it's the longer the two letters, you'll see what I'm talking about under your regulation.
Mr. Attorney Lachlan, if you'd like to see a copy of Attorney Small's
If it's short enough, you might as well just read it.
Excuse me?
If it's short enough, you can read it, or I'll just come get it.
Sure. This is from our Corporate Counsel to Janice Small. Well, I guess you can read it as we don't read all of the other correspondence, but you can see exactly what she said and it basically said
It is my understanding that the application looks to reduce existing nonconformities on the property. A property owner is entitled to rebuild a nonconforming structure. And here, they are looking to do so where the reduction in the nonconformities. Since they are entitled to do so, they do not need a variance. Section 6.13.2B2 is complied with in that there are no increase in the nonconformity. That section 6.13.2B2 is referenced in my letter. And it's also copied so you can review it for yourselves. Page 1 and 2 is my letter. Page 3 is the math that shows that we're reducing the nonconformity so far as the setback encroachments, nearly 70%. In addition, the building will be smaller. The fourth page is my rendering over what you see as the application map, where the existing structure is heavily hashed. Those are the encroachments of the existing structure. The lighter-pen area is where the proposed structure encroachments will be, and that's it. That shows the nearly 70% reduction in the nonconformity. And then the last two pages are a copy from your regulations. And they say, under 6.13.2B2, "Structures failing to meet any requirement of these regulations shall not be altered if the result would be an increase in the nonconformity." So the converse is correct. Because we are not increasing the nonconformity, the building can be altered. Those are words from your Corporation Counsel. So we've known one another for a long time, believe me. But in addition, Janice Small said herself, "A variance is not necessary." With that, certainly whatever questions you may have for me, I'm happy to answer. But Matthew Brown is the expert who will be able to provide detail for you about the application.
Sure. Well, you did some housekeeping. We just have a little bit of housekeeping to do. And I believe there was another correspondence that we received on the application that Mr. Allenson wants to note for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is some multi-page document. It's undated, un-referenced, really. I'm not quite sure how to note it properly. On the bottom, it references some of the minutes from the ZBA meeting on March 21st, 2022. And there is a cover letter that asks to review those minutes regarding denials of variance. It's very peculiar.
Do we have, who's it from?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I have the envelope, but there's no return address either.
Okay. All right. Good enough. With that, the applicant, please continue your presentation.
Good evening. Again, my name is Matthew Brown. I'm a Registered Professional Engineer here in Connecticut and Vice President with Barton and La Judas located in Glastonbury. I'd like to take some time to walk the Commission through existing conditions and proposed conditions as per this proposed development. The existing site, as Attorney Lachlan identified, is in the RF40 Zone. The total space is 1.52 acres. It has frontage on both North Colony Road as well as Old Colony Road. There is a curb cut, existing curb cut, located on both frontages as well. The existing site has a total of three different structures on the site. On the northern portion of the site, there's a large building that's approximately 8,515 square feet, and then a small shed located there. And then down on the southern portion of the site, there is a approximately 336-square-foot structure, which until recently was a pool business. That was operated by Basically, the primary structure has long been substantially vacant and unused. The existing site is very flat, although there is a minor grade from west to east towards Route 5. At maximum, there's about a four-foot change in grade from the back portion of the parcel to the front. The existing site has very little defined circulation. There are parking areas up to basically the property line around all sides. There's very little existing landscaping on the property. There are two mature trees located here and here that are within the town's right-of-way, a small landscaped area here, and then a small overgrown area in this area. This small overgrown area is going to be eliminated. The trees will remain, and then a very small portion of the existing landscaped area on the southern portion of the property will be disturbed, most of it being remained. All existing structures on the site will be removed as part of this proposed development. So what you see now is the proposed development. The proposal includes one new structure located in this pink color here. It's just slightly larger than 5,000 square and this consists of a single automated tunnel excuse me, sorry, a single automated tunnel car wash. So there's no manual car washing here. It's all automated in the tunnel. As is existing, there will remain to be two access points to the property. The first is on Route 5. The existing access drive curb cut will be widened slightly to allow for one lane in and two lanes out. So there will be a dedicated right-hand turn lane as well as a lane where you can go straight and left. That curb cut will be aligned better with the curb cut that's across the street and will line up with the existing signals, heads that exist at this intersection. So this is a signalized intersection with a dedicated left-turn lane into the site and we will be providing a dedicated right turn out from the site. The other entrance will be located on Old Colony Road towards the back. The, so as as somebody enters the site, if you were to come in from North Colony Road, you would enter here and wind your way around to the back of the parcel into this area, what we refer to as the queuing area. If you were to come into the site from Old Colony Road, you would immediately turn right into the queuing area. So the queuing area eventually splits into three lanes. Each one of these lanes comes to a canopy where an automated kiosk will have the interaction for all the users there. Each area will have an automated gate, an arm that will come down and go up and control access into the facility. So if multiple cars come in at the same time, the second gate will not open until the first car is clear. So there's no problems queuing up into the tunnel. If, the car wash will sell monthly subscriptions. So there will be a license plate reader that will automatically raise the gate for people who subscribe to that service. If not, they'll be able to select the services that they choose at the automated kiosk, provide payment, and then the system will let them through. And that way, the system also knows who's getting what, who's paying for what, and you get the appropriate services. So as you come around, you enter the car wash from the north side of the building. Should there be a problem, we have a dedicated bypass lane that allows a vehicle to bypass the tunnel if so necessary. So as noted, vehicles will enter on the north side and exit on the south side. So after the exit, after they exit from the tunnel, they have an option to leave the site from there, or they can utilize the free vacuums associated with that. There's 14 free vacuums located on the front of the building. One of those is accessible. And then there are nine additional vacuum stalls located on the southern portion of the site. If a vehicle chooses to use the vacuums in front of the building, this is a one-way traffic only, they will continue and wrap around towards the exit where they can exit out onto North Colony Road. Or they can choose to, there's a stop sign here and here. They can come through and exit the site through Old Colony Road. A combination of pavement markings as well as signage on the site will guide customers through the site and into the appropriate location. Other pertinent site features include a dumpster pad here, located completely within the side yard of the proposed structure, as well as a central vac system here. How this is different from a lot of more older, frankly, facilities is with a central system, there's not a motor at each one of those spaces. These vacuums are free. So the way it works is you just walk up, pull the wand out. It will automatically then trigger the system to apply vacuum and you can use your vehicle. There will be a vacuum hose on either side of the car, so it's easy. You don't have to drag a hose around. Lastly, we are proposing four employee parking spaces located at the southern end of the building as well. We will need to do some minor site grading to accommodate the proposed layout and provide for stormwater management. So it's important to note a few things as have been mentioned already. The proposed design, when compared to existing conditions, reduces overall lot coverage, increases open space on the site, and then reduces pre-existing nonconformances. Specifically, the side yard setback nonconformance located along here, which is currently about 5.5 feet, is eliminated completely. An elimination of the nonconformance related to the existing dumpster not being located in an existing side yard as is required. The setback of to Old Colony Road at the rear of the property is increased from approximately four feet to eight feet. And then the addition of significant landscaping within the 50-foot front yard setbacks on both North Colony Road and Old Colony Road, where there is virtually none existing. For erosion and sedimentation control will consist of a series of best management practices. Each catch basin not only proposed on the site, but located in the vicinity of the proposed work, will have inlet protection. We propose a construction entrance, also known as an anti-tracking pad at the Old Colony Road entrance, which we would propose to be the primary access during construction. And then we also propose silk fence around the entire perimeter of the site and temporary sediment traps designed in accordance with the 2002 Connecticut Erosion and Sedimentation Control Manual that will serve to treat construction stormwater during construction. The stormwater system, stormwater will be collected from all paved portions of the site before being discharged into existing drainage systems. At the front of the site, there'll be three new catch basins, which will all flow through hydrodynamic separator before being discharged to the existing system. In the back, stormwater will flow via sheet flow into an existing or a proposed water quality basin and stormwater management basin. That basin will serve to mitigate peak flows after post-development. The calculations show that for a more routine two-year storm, peak stormwater flow will be reduced 28%. And for all other design storms up until and including 100-year storm event, peak flows will be reduced by 22% under proposed conditions. So the design meets all requirements for zero net increase for peak flows during design storms. More importantly, or as importantly, I think, with regards to the town's goals with regards to MS4 compliance, there is no directly connected impervious area on the site. Stormwater treatment is handled several ways. Stormwater will be pretreated in all catch basins through the use of a two-foot sump to collect sediments. As well as, we'll have in the back, we've got a swale, a vegetated swale, which will collect stormwater, as well as the pretreatment within the basin itself. So that, here, this treatment portion of the basin is a primary treatment. And we'll also have a hydrodynamic separator here prior to discharge for the stormwater that's been collected in catch basins. So on this plan also, we've got other utilities. The site will be connected to public utilities, both water and sewer as well as gas. Fortunately, all of those utilities are located within the right-of-way and off the pavement. So there'll be no cutting into Route 5 required. The service for our electric is to be determined based upon ever source, whether they want to provide service from Old Colony Road or bring service in. No, it's all
Wallingford Electric.
Say again?
Wallingford has their own electric.
Oh, my bad. My apologies. Whether Wallingford's electric company is going to want to provide service from Old Colony Road or from North Colony Road. Colony Road or from North Colony Road. All wash water in the site at the proposed building will be collected in a series of trench drains within the building. All of those trench drains will discharge to the back of the site. You can see here, this is representative of what's referred to as the reclaim system. This is a series of storage tanks that the water will cascade through, with the idea being that as it passes from tank to tank, settlement occurs, and the water at the last tank is clean. Clean enough that it can be reused in the wash process. So a certain amount of water is drawn off that last tank and reused in the process, which reduces the overall amount of water that's necessary for the proposed car wash. Any water that's not reused will pass through an oil-water separator prior to discharge into the sanitary sewer. Certainly, no wash water would be discharged into the drainage system. The oil-water separator will meet the requirements of the Connecticut DEEP Miscellaneous Industrial Users General Permit. Up until recently, it was referred to as the Vehicle Maintenance Waste Water Discharge Permit, and the applicant will be providing registration with the town, as is required by that general permit. All products utilized within the building will be stored within a storage room that has a floor drain connected to the oil-water separator. So in the unlikely event of a spill, everything will be contained within the oil-water separator. Lastly, I'd like to walk through the proposed landscaping for the project. So as mentioned before, there is very little existing landscaping on the site. So from this perspective, the landscaping will be dramatically improved as a result of the proposed development. There will be more than a half an acre of created green space that doesn't currently exist on the site. There will be over 150 plants proposed to be installed, including 22 deciduous trees, as you can see, located along the frontage and throughout the site, and I believe approximately New deciduous, mixed deciduous and coniferous trees and shrubs. And they will be located along the front of the building and in the islands around the parking area. Proposed lighting will include a combination of single-head and double-head fixtures located throughout the site in accordance with the regulations, and as well as, there will be a few wall packs installed as well. Mounting height for the post-mounted lighting will be 20 feet, and for the wall packs will be 12 feet. So that concludes my walkthrough of the proposed development. I'd like to turn it back to Jim.
Thanks. Before you sit down, Matt, the international traffic engineer calculation...
Sure. Yeah, the regulations refer to the IT Trip Generation Guide, and for this type of use, they do have a specific use of a tunnel car wash. And per tunnel, I forget exactly off the top of my head what the number is...
Forty-one and 78, right?
Yeah, I think it's 78 is the peak afternoon. Yeah, peak afternoon is the highest is 78, which is less than the 100 trips per hour that would trigger the need for a traffic report. So the IT is the standard, and we feel that we meet that as well.
What's the sidewalk situation?
The sidewalk? We propose a sidewalk along the frontage here on Connecticut Route 5. The development that is located just to the north does have a sidewalk that cuts right at the property line. So we do propose to continue that sidewalk all the way across to the edge of the diner property located to our south. It's good because there is a crosswalk here with an existing curb cut sidewalk ramp located right on this location, but the ramp doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't even get you all the way to the PED button. So this will connect everything, get everything to the PED button. So we do have to go around the existing pole here, but we will have connection to that PED button.
Sidewalks along the back?
Sidewalks, there are no sidewalks that we have been able to confirm along any of Old Colony Road. There's no sidewalk now, so there's no way to make that more non-conforming, so we're maintaining that non-conformance.
And then the internal vacuum, the internal machines for the vacuum, or the central vac system?
The central vac system? The, which part of that?
They're quiet.
Oh, yeah. So the central vac system, I guess the other advantage is it has a lot more insulation that can be done on it, so that it does provide for a quieter system than the old traditional individual vacuums that you would see at each parking spot.
And then there, I wish there were a quick way for you to get to know Mr. Gallo. He has a few comments for you, if that's all right.
Just, I don't think, I think you need to turn it on, sir. And then also, just for the record, your name and address, please.
Jerry Gallo, 15 Shanti Place, Tallinn, Connecticut. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight, to pull you away from your homes on a beautiful summer night, especially to be the only application. Thank you, that's all I can say. Kevin, I'd like to thank you and your staff. Everybody at the town has been wonderful to work with. You should know that. They've been tough, but they've been fair. So I thank you for that. I'm new to the car wash business, okay? After 35 years in the quick lube and oil change business, I saw the writing on the wall that oil change intervals were getting longer. Didn't need as many oil changes. I thought this business could go away, but we'll be around. Well, cars will always get dirty, so let's do a car wash. I became fascinated with car washes. I love car washes. It's kind of strange, I know, but I love it. I hope you're as passionate about what you do as I am about car washing, okay? Best thing about a car wash, when a customer leaves the tunnel and they're in their car and you look at them, they have a smile on their face. Not a lot of businesses, people walk out with a smile on their face. That's, to me, that's pretty cool. So after having one car wash, I said, geez, I'd like to do another car wash, kind of what I do. I needed to find a town and a location to build this wash. So I had a criteria. One, I needed a nice town. Wallingford's a beautiful town. The more I look at Wallingford, the more I love this town. It's beautiful. Probably one of the best-kept secrets in Connecticut, to be honest with you. I needed a location on a main road with a strong retail area, and a strong retail area. The site fit that. I needed at least an acre and a quarter with preferably 300 feet of frontage. This site's an acre and a half with 400 feet of frontage. And most importantly, I needed it to be in allowed use in the zone. And a car wash is allowed at 654 North Colony Road by a special permit. So we developed a plan. We built what I believe to be a beautiful building. You don't see many car washes that look as nice as this, okay? You can see, it's got a colonial look to it. Looks like it's brick, a nice, steep roof. Signage is nice. They're not eternally lit signs. They're carved signs, so they look nice. Put up a couple of the slides. I'll put this up real quick, just to show you what the rear will look like, so you can get an idea of the gates and the overhang for the cars to drive through. And then a rendering is nice, but this is an actual photo of our site in Vernon, okay? So you can see, what we're presenting is what we're going to get. It's a beautiful building, and I couldn't be more proud of it. I couldn't be prouder of the plan, and I couldn't be prouder of the build and work with Wallingford. I look forward to it. That being said, you're going to get an excellent corporate citizen. The neighbors on Route 5, you're going to get an excellent corporate neighbor, an excellent neighbor. The residents of Wallingford are going to get an upstanding business to deal with. So it seems like a win-win for everybody, okay? And with that, I'd just like to thank you again, and I hope we can get your support tonight.
Thank you, sir. At this point, does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good. I guess before I go to the commission, Mr. Pugini, any comments on the application or any of the information that we received?
I'd just say, what I say, I'm generally supportive of this application. I think it will enhance the site aesthetically. I think it will enhance the site traffic flow, and I think it will, it's a great-looking site. It's much better than what it looks like now. So I think strictly as a special permit use, I think it will fit the criteria of a special permit in the site. And I think that's, I could answer any other questions you may have, once you discuss it.
I think at this point in time, we'll start with commission members as far as questions that they may have for the applicant. Commission members with questions for the applicant. Mr. Vinoy.
Just a quick question. Hours of operation?
Our Vernon wash is open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. We definitely won't be open any later, and we'll probably open a little bit later. I anticipate the hours being 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Other commission members. Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions. I do like the fact that it is reducing the non-conformity, number one. I do like the fact there's going to be a sidewalk out there. That's fantastic. The real question I have is on the, and I think this is for Mr. Brown, on the, you know, you mentioned that you're going to kind of recirculate some of the water that, you know, is used in the car washing, and it goes through, you know, some process, and, you know, a lot of the water's recaptured. And the water that can't be recaptured is discharged. Could you explain a little more on that process? And really, my question is, you know, it sounds like there's going to be some type of maintenance plan, you know, with the filters and things? And this may be part of, you know, what the Water and Sewer Division, you know, in their memo, you know, it's item four. It says submission of interior plumbing plans and a wastewater discharge survey. And I'm just wondering if this, you know, recirculation process, you know, again, is going to require a maintenance plan, and if this is what the, you know, our water sewer department is talking about?
So with regards to the maintenance plan, yes, there is routine maintenance that would happen on the series of tanks. So the process itself is, it all flows via gravity from one tank to the next to the next.
Three tanks?
Yeah. So a total of three tanks, and the last tank is, would obviously need the least amount of maintenance in terms of scheduling, because that would collect the least amount of sediment. That first tank, you know, would have more routine pump out and everything be required on that. So it will be monitored on a quarterly basis for sediment accumulation within the tank. And, you know, at any point at which the tank needs to be pumped out, it will be pumped out of all sediment. That goes also with the oil-water separator. I believe there's an annual requirement for pumping on the oil-water separator, no matter what, but it would be monitored for both any potential oil collection, which is pretty unlikely in these types of systems, but you might also get a little bit of sediment. Frankly, you get much less sediment than would be typical in an oil-water separator, because you've got, you know, how many, what are they?
Three sediment tanks.
And what are they, 1,000 gallons?
No, they're 1,500.
So there's 4,500 gallons of sedimentation that can occur prior to getting to the oil-water separator. So, you know, by the time any water that would flow through to the sanitary sewer occurs, it's pretty much dropped all the sediment that it probably will be expected to drop. The water that is collected off of the last tank and reused also goes through a pretreatment system within the building itself, and it is used in specific portions of the wash cycle, not used as a final rinse, as you could imagine.
Okay, great. It does sound like, you know, as part of one of the conditions of approval will be the Water Sewer Division's comments, and it sounds like item four does, you know, deal with this issue.
Yep, and we're more than committed to, you know, meeting whatever requirements that they put on us.
And it does look like a nice building, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions for this, but if I could through you, Mr. Chairman, if I could start with the town planner. According to our town regs for Route 5 District, was there, when you, I think you indicated you met with the applicant or representative, was there a discussion regarding interconnection to either the neighboring properties? Because I don't see it on the plans.
Yes, but I don't believe they were able to get a good interconnection happening over there. We did discuss that, but I don't remember what the full response was, but that's certainly something we could discuss with the applicant again.
All right. Well...
I'm happy to address it on the plans. Again, Matt Brown from Barton and La Judas. So the area that would be available for a potential interconnection would be along this property line here. There is about a four-foot grade difference between our site and that site there, which we would not be able to make up in that short distance. This is a steeper slope here, so we do have that. Rather than, as landscaped with turf establishment, we've proposed a crushed stone surface in that area to minimize any potential for erosion.
What about the other? What about the other?
I believe on the other side here, there's parking that's right up along here, that we would have, you know, no ability to dictate the diner from losing their parking in that area.
Okay. Thank you. I guess, Mr. Chairman, I guess I would say to the commission and the applicant, I mean, the idea of the interconnection is make it available on your plan, because either the diner or the strip plaza next door won't be there forever, and if your place is there forever, at least it's filed on the land records. So as a condition, would that be acceptable to indicate on the plan that future interconnection? And that way, if there's some change next door, either of the neighboring properties, this plan would already reflect that at some point in the future, there might be interconnection.
Could you give me just one minute to talk with these guys? Oh, I know, I, but remember, this has the benefit of the light. But just on the plans, I'm not saying build it, just like we made Duncan Donnet's do it. Yes, Mr. Fitzsimmons, thanks. And then the only thing I'm thinking about is that would need to be subject to your review, because you would have to approve that interconnection. Wouldn't be our prerogative to approve that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, our reg says, you know, to improve traffic circulation and safety in Route 5 and adjacent roads, the commission may require the access...
Anyway, it does say it in the reg, so, and I was saying to my commissioner, I mean, putting it on the plans doesn't mean build it. Things change in the future. At least it'll be on the plans if... At least it'll be on the plans if things change either.
Yes, thank you.
And then, you know, as you were discussing and presenting, and the picture has changed now, because it's the plan, the picture you showed, where is that car wash? Did you say it's live or...
That's at 56 Talcottville Road and Vernon.
What town?
Vernon, Vernon, Connecticut.
I'm struggling, because it's a nice building.
Thank you.
But there's only one car pictured, and I'm struggling with 23 free vacuums and a single car wash, because I know what the... I'm not done. I know what the I C T report says, single tunnel car wash, and Wallingford has five existing car washes. They're all different. They're all different. My first thought when I saw the plans, you know, and knowing that we're going to discuss it tonight, is can you move the vacuums in back? But 23 free vacuums in front is what I'm going to see driving down Route 5. So I'm having a... And I don't see the need for 23 with a single bay car wash. I know you're passionate about car washes. I'm not, you know, but I do go to a car wash. I've been to, I think, all of them in town. I'm just having a tough time squaring that number.
Okay, the vacuums, if you notice, are silver in color. Believe it or not, you really don't see them as you drive by down the road. They don't... They don't jump out at you, and that's why we chose that color, okay? If you go by some other car washes, maybe in neighboring towns, you may see some poles that are very similar. They chose to make their poles very bright colored. I chose to just have them blend in. So that's, A, that's why we did that. The number of 23, do I anticipate them all being used at the same time? That would be great, but that's not reality. It's just really for a convenience for our customers. I just don't want anybody to have to wait, okay? So that's why we have the 23. Could I get away with 20? I could, and if you insist on it, I will. But it's... My thought was, just because they're there, they don't have to be used. Someone could just park there. But they're there. It's either to have them there and not use them, then add them later. They're all within the setback. They look... I wish you could come in person, see, and they look nice.
Yeah, we're not going to debate nice. I would share with you, you know, and again, I... Earlier today, I was in the neighboring town and saw a similar-looking car wash where all the silver was red, and it was very busy and very active. And it was a single tunnel car wash, and I'm thinking of your application, thinking that's a lot of activity for a single, as you call it, single tunnel.
Yep.
And the activity was everyone vacuuming the cars and hanging out and doing things. So I'm trying to visualize that, you know, and I'd share with you, because certainly I know your counsel. I mean, anytime you could reduce a nonconformity, I'm right there with you. This is a significant reduction. However, I'm troubled by the... There still would be nonconformities on the site, okay? So we're not 100% eliminating, and by eliminating the building, I'm of the opinion personally that whenever you can reduce a nonconformity, great, but when you're going to take the building down, I'm thinking anything you rebuild should conform. So I want to redirect my question and say, can the 23 vacuums be relocated to your second front yard on North Colony versus frontage on 5, Route 5? And I'd share with you, when other applicants for other car washes have come in, that's always been my question. So this is nothing new.
Yeah. Speaking in generalities, okay? Car washes in another town, a neighboring town, that's a... I believe theirs are in the front as well, in that neighboring town, the ones that are red. For... I'm not sure that we would even eliminate the nonconformity by moving them to the rear with turning radiuses, everything along that point. Still, people are still going to have to exit out the front, and...
One of the challenges with the site is the fact that we do have a front yard in the back and in the front. That leaves, and I can show it on the plan... So on this plan here, this green dash line, which may be difficult for you to see, represents the area that's completely outside the quote-unquote "conforming" area for building a structure. It would not be possible to do all of that and have everything be conforming. Due to the queuing space that we need for the vehicles entering, we want to make sure circulation is maintained, and then to allow the vehicles to come out and then have the appropriate turning radius to get into where the vacuums are, we feel this is the most appropriate and best option. We're not in a position where we can create any new nonconformances in the front yard. So with this, you know, as you mentioned, you know, the nonconformities are towards the rear, and we've tried to minimize the nonconformities by, you know, this, the setback, the minimum setback that we have now is to a canopy rather than a full structure, so it's not as visually imposing as the structure right up against the rear property line here. So in short, I don't see how we'd be able to reconfigure the site to allow for the vacuums to be put into the rear of the property.
Also, I'd like to add, if you... You may not have noticed, but when you go to a car wash, you almost always, 99.9% of the time, make a left-hand swing as an entrance, okay? It's where the driver is, and it's easier for the customer to make that swing. So that would also be a problem.
Yeah, I'm thinking, as you see me thinking, I agree. On that, as I said, I guess my comment, my last comment would be, I think Route 5 is at times a challenging road, but at times it is, it does, it has improved, I think, over the years, and I think, you know, the Route 5 district, the design district, I think of the Subaru dealer initially, you know, when they came in, they put in all that landscaping to conform. It looks nice. It conforms to the regs. Others, other properties, anytime they can conform, they should conform. So as I do think this could be an improvement, I still don't think we're where it needs to be, and I think the landscaping is an improvement, but I think the visualization of seeing a lot of cars vacuuming is just not a level of activity I think is appealing in Route 5 and certainly this area. But that's just my opinion, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Other commission members with comments? Mr. Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question. As Commissioner Fitzsimmons had said, you know, generally, I think we're all in favor of reducing nonconformities. Typically, when you see a reduction in a nonconformity, it's where you have, particularly with a structure, it's where you have an existing structure and you're looking to alter it in such a way that ultimately reduces the nonconformity. In this case, this is a little bit different. This is a little bit different situation. What is being proposed here is that the existing nonconforming structure is going to be torn down completely, and a new structure built. And I understand that our town council has provided us with a memo. Attorney Loughlin, I read your letter, and it was very thorough and convincing, but one of the questions I had, you know, as you mentioned earlier, that there is an objection here tonight, and my concern is that none of the memos that we've been provided cite to any case law, and I'm sure this is not the first time that something like this has come about. I mean, in your research, Attorney Loughlin, did you find any case law that would support this type of use of this provision, where it allowed, the court allowed, an existing nonconforming structure to be torn down in a new project or a new building built in its place?
Yes.
Okay.
And it goes back for as long as variances have been granted. When there's a nonconforming use, if you tear it down with the intent of restoring it, you don't abandon that nonconformity. So it's okay that we're tearing down the building and then a month later putting up a new one? Yes.
Yeah, well, and I could see that, because if you tear down a nonconforming building and you just rebuild it, that's one thing. Here, we're doing something a little bit different, and that's why I'm asking, you know, is there any case law that, you know, under these circumstances, that support it? I mean, I see there were references to the regs, and that's helpful, but, you know, a case law or a case citation would be helpful, because, you know, as you know, we have an objection here, and certainly it would be helpful if you had some...
So the case law that you're looking for would, it's permitted to rebuild a building when the intent was to not abandon the nonconformity? Is that what you're asking for?
No, what I'm saying here is, we're looking at a whole different building. We're not just rebuilding a building.
Right.
We're building something else. And my question is, you know, is there a case law to support the use of these types of regulations under those circumstances?
I'm certain it's findable, but I haven't been assigned that, and the regs are pretty clear in this case, because they do say you can't build a building that's nonconforming if that modification will increase the nonconformity, period. So the converse is necessarily true. We don't have to get any variance approval, provided we are not increasing the nonconformity. And because it's so clear, I don't know that even if I were to try, that I would be able to find it. That's why Janice wrote what she wrote.
Yeah, I guess where I'm getting hung up is, are we building, are we rebuilding the existing building, or are we rebuilding something else?
We're rebuilding something else well within the envelope of the existing structure. We could put our car wash, if it were to work, in that envelope and leave it 5,800 feet in encroachments, but because we're rebuilding the building to 1,800 feet in encroachments, all within the same envelope, we don't have to worry about the sidewalk nonconformity, because there's no sidewalk there. We don't need to worry about the landscaping nonconformity, because there's none there right now. All the lists of the things that we asked variances for to the ZBA were removed when we moved the vacuums from where they were to the south end of the property, because the setbacks were eliminated. We aren't asking for any more new encroachments, and that's why Janice wrote what she wrote, because we're all within the envelope.
Fair enough. I, you know, I... My real concern was, you know, legal precedent in case law and what that shows, so... Thank you.
Other commission members? A couple of questions concerning just the queuing on the property with... I know with some car washes, certainly in the wintertime, when people want to get their car washes after a storm, I know with some of the car washes, it becomes a problem as far as queuing. Can you... How many cars can be accommodated in your queue?
So as noted, we do provide all the queuing space for behind the building, plus we have queuing space located on the other side of the access arms, and based upon previous analysis, we have more than 30 cars, space for 30 cars available in that area.
So that's just behind the building, is that correct?
Behind the building, and correct, and leading into the tunnel, not including any of the access drive areas on the site.
Okay. And then I go back to the question just Mr. Fitzsimmons had, as far as just the number of vacuums. It just seems, it seems like a lot, and given the fact that your vacuums are going to be free, as I understand, correct? So I can just simply, you know, my wife says, hey, we're going out somewhere, I need a car vacuum. I can just drive there, and so you're creating much more activity on the property than really what's being generated by the business. So that, to me, is somewhat of a, you know, somewhat of an issue, especially with, you know, all of the number of vacuums there. It just seems that for the actual operation of the car, and again, I know less about car washes than Mr. Fitzsimmons. I never get my car washed. I have a very energetic wife. But again, just, but just looking at this, it just seems for one tunnel, there's just a lot of vacuums there, and I just don't... I have a difficult time understanding why you need them all, and especially because I look at some of them really aren't needed for the car wash itself, again, because someone can come in and just say, I'm going to park my car and vacuum it out and leave.
First, we're going to save some of your wife's energy, okay? People really don't take advantage of it like that. I kind of thought the same thing when I started doing my research on washes and I visited. The idea of the vacuums is to not have it congested, not have it look too busy, not have the cars stacked up, boom, boom, boom. Just have it spread out. It looks a little more eerie. That's really the idea of the vacuums, okay? There's no, there won't be any congestion. I really don't know what else to say, except that...
I'll add something. Again, Matt Brown, I think, at least my personal experience and what I've seen, there's a car wash similar to this in design, close to my office, and I do have a monthly...
If you could bring them, sure, please bring them over a little closer.
My apologies. So near my office in Glastonbury, there's a facility very similar in design to how this is with the types of vacuums and free vacuums and such, and I do have a monthly subscription to that place. More often than not, you never see people take two spaces directly next to each other. Even though the spaces are wide, we do have 12 and 1/2-foot wide spaces, which is, you know, substantially wider than a minimum requirement for a parking space. You know, the mentality is, you think it's too close, plus you don't want to bump into them when they're vacuuming and everything. So what you see here is unlikely that people would, you know, get into a situation where you'd have it completely full. They would drive by rather than pull into spaces and make sure that the entirety of the parking lot is full. So while there are, you know, as many spaces as are shown, I think the general mentality is, it's not the intent to have all of them, you know, used. You're giving people the opportunity to provide space on either side of them while they clean their vehicle.
Okay, fair enough. With that, if there's no more questions from commission members, this is a public hearing, so I go out to the public, entertain questions from the public. Would ask that when they come to the microphone, their name and address, and we'll start on the right side here with this young lady. We'll move back and then go more toward the center. So again, name and address, please.
I have a question about the vacuums, because Bill is talking about the ones that are on the side by Colony Island. Why do we need all of the other ones in front of the building, and if no one uses every one, why do we have to...
I think the microphone needs to be turned on.
Hi, Joan Ives Parisi, 23 East Main Street, Wallingford. I have a question on the vacuums. I have a question on the vacuums. No one has talked about the nine vacuums that are on the side by Colony Diner. That seems to be enough for anybody who wants to use a free vacuum. And if no one uses one side by side, why don't you have empty spaces? Why do you have to vacuum in every single space?
Gentlemen would like to answer that question?
Well, I do believe the conversation that we were just having was a total of 23, which included the discussion for the nine located at the south side. And in regards to the vacuums at each one of the spaces, it does provide flexibility as people do navigate the site at different times and you can't choose where somebody's going to park. It, it just gives more flexibility. And it's, in terms of the way it's designed with the central vac system, it's easy to install them at each one of the locations.
Thank you.
Okay. I just think it's way too many. And I do agree with Mr. Fitzsimmons that it is not attractive.
Other members of, yes?
Parisi, 23 East Main Street. I think Commissioner Fitzsimmons had something more to his question. I wish he could have elaborated on it. I thought my wife wasn't paying attention, but I'm sorry, she did a good job. Now, I'm concerned with the vacuums that line up with the restaurant. Now, they have an outside tent. Yeah, the restaurant does.
An outside tent?
Yes, they do. I wouldn't want to be eating there when nine people are vacuuming their cars out. And I, I was in the custodial business for 40 something years. I'd like to know what the specs are on your vacuums as to how much stuff passes through into the air. In this day and age, that's very important with COVID and, you know, all the damn things that are flying around. You want to say something, sir? I'll wait.
Confirming, confirming details that I'll respond with.
I can respond. The motor for the vacuums, okay? Think of like a central vacuum system in somebody's house, okay? The motor for the vacuums is located at the south corner and exit of the tunnel.
Right.
So it's like a central vacuum system. The only thing you will hear, there's no noise over by, will be no noise over by the, the tent.
It's not a question of noise, sir. It's a question of what makes it through the filters. How fine is the filtering system?
Oh, the filters, there's a HEPA filter on those, on those-
Well, HEPA doesn't go all the way.
Okay.
It's how many microns are stopped by the filter. And HEPA, everybody puts HEPA on something and it's not really correct.
I would point out that the vacuum system and the motor and where the filter is, is, I believe approximately 275 feet away from the tent at the restaurant.
Well, that's fine, but if you have a nice northeast are blowing in or wind coming from the north, it's going to go right to the tent. I know the area and I think most of the commissioners do too.
Yep. I, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree, that's all.
You can disagree, but I'm, what I'm saying is true. From my experience, I know. I used to have to buy backpack vacuums that cost $500 just so I could use them in a clean room application. That's a lot of money for a backpack.
It is.
And that was 10 years ago, so you can figure that out. And the other concern I have, commissioners, I was at a car wash last week. You know my cars are immaculate. Spend a lot of time there. When you're retired, you have nothing else to do. I can't walk, so I can't clean them myself. Well, I was waiting for a vacuum. There were four ladies there. Oh, I'm sorry, man. They had everything but the kitchen sink out of that car on the ground. It was a spring cleaning. I'm sitting there, I'm saying, what in the hell's going on? And they're chattering away, maybe it was a book club. I don't know. But I'll tell you, I gave up and said, I'm going to keep going. So I don't think people come in and out of vacuums as fast maybe as the gentleman thinks so. Not you, Mr. Gallo, but your consultant. I question whether people who drive in there and just use the vacuum take off. There's a lot of people can't resist the free, free thing. So people coming in and out, trying to use it free and get out, plus they're going to probably not fire, follow the traffic patterns. I think it's going to be kind of a mess. And I'm also concerned with the gates. In an emergency, a medical emergency, who handles the gates if the cars are stacked up? Is there some way to open them and keep them open?
The gate can, yes, the gate can be, can be opened and cars evacuated through the bypass lane without having to go through the tunnel.
And a number of employees that would be at the site, at the, operating the site?
Three to four.
Would be there on a constant basis?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public? Yes, gentlemen here.
Good evening. Jim Wolf, Economic Development. I'm not big on car washes. I wait for it to rain. But anyway, the, I'm concerned with the exiting. Will there be two lanes to exit onto Route 5? One for the left turn and one for the right turn? And then an additional lane coming in? I, I couldn't make it out on the plan.
Yeah, that's correct. There's a, one lane coming in, which is on the, on the south side of the property. And then there's two lanes that are going out that are on the north side. One is a right turn lane, one's a left turn lane. And I believe the left turn lane also, if you wanted to go across to the medical center, you could go across. Because again, as the gentleman indicated, there's a traffic light there.
Right. And that's become a concern because I think we made a mistake at Cumberland Farms. When you come out, there's only one lane to either go left or right. And there should have been two.
Yeah. But again, the good, one of the positive things about this, no matter how you may feel, people may feel about the application, at least from the exit onto, I always get confused if it's Colony Road or Colony Street, is that there's a traffic light there. So unlike some other locations that have a lot of activity, there is, you know, there is no traffic light.
Other than that, I think the building looks nice. It's definitely an improvement over what's there.
Thank you, sir. On the right side now, are there any other people on the right side who would like to comment on the application? Seeing none, I'll go to the left side. This gentleman, oh, excuse me, I didn't see you. You have to raise your hand a little higher.
You're right, my left, I got, sorry. Thanks. Tim Ryan, Economic Development Office. I like Mr. Parisi, like to keep my cars really clean. So I like car washes. It was just mentioned by Mr. Wolf, take a look at what's there now. All right? We know the site. We know how difficult this site is to develop, not only because it's got two front yards, but it's almost triangular in shape. In economic development, we often always look for highest and best use of any site. And I will tell you that there's not a lot of other options for that site. I think this is a good option. All right? I think it's a good option for a number of reasons. You know, a number of years ago, this commission put the Route 5 beautification program in place and we're watching it evolve. Looks good. That office building across the street looks great. Subaru looks great. The strip mall to the north of this proposed car wash looks great. So we're watching it happen. And, and I see this car wash as something that is going to make it look very nice as well. There was reference made earlier to a car wash in another city. It's got the vacuums in the front. I think we all know which one we're talking about. And the car, the vacuums are 10 feet from the road. Right? There's significant setbacks on this site. And there's significant landscaping on this site that pushes the visual impact of those, which I don't think is egregious frankly, but it pushes the visual impact back quite a bit. So I, I'll just say that I've been working with Mr. Gallo, a little over a year now, Mr. Gallo, may have 2021. He has proven to be very flexible. He is, he's been working with not only the town planner, but the water sewer division, all of the town departments to try to make this thing work. He has, he has rearranged things on the site a number of times. And he wants to be here. And I think we should want to have him here. I think it's a good use for the site. And as has been stated earlier, look what's there now. And I really don't see a lot of other options for that site. There's not developers chomping at the bit. So I, I think that the building is an attractive building. I don't think, you know, Mr. and Ms. Sir, as I just said, because there's a light at the intersection there, it makes all the difference in the world in terms of traffic movement as opposed to the Cumberland Farms-Liberty Bank intersection. So we support the application and I hope you would support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I take it that takes care of everyone who'd like to speak on the right side. Now we'll go to the, to the center, then we'll move over to the left of center.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Timothy Lee. I represent Scrubbing Bubbles, who is a car wash at 895 North Colony Road in Wallingford. Before I get started, I would like to commend the applicant on an excellent presentation and beautiful graphics. It certainly is a nicely designed plan. However, the question still remains, does the application comply with the Wallingford zoning regulations? And quite frankly, the answer to that question is no. By the applicant's own admission, the application doesn't comply with the building setbacks, with the landscaping requirements, with the sidewalk requirements. And I'd written a letter to the commission today. It was referenced earlier in that letter. I outlined the deficiencies with regard to the plan from a zoning perspective. And I will resubmit that application or that letter again this evening. I understand that the applicant has made some modifications to the plan. However, the modifications to the plan do not make the plan conforming with the zoning regulations. I understand the argument tonight is, hey, we agree we don't conform with the zoning regulations, but our application is less conforming than what's there. And I appreciate that argument and it's got a certain level of appeal. However, that's an argument you make to the zoning board of appeals in order to get a variance saying, hey, I can't meet, there's an existing 20-foot setback. I can't meet that, but I can make it a little bit better than it was. Give me a variance so I can rebuild the building. And that's not an argument that is usually made to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Interestingly enough, this applicant did make that argument to the zoning board of appeals in March. They presented a version of this application. They asked for variance of the sidewalk requirement, of the building requirement, of the landscaping requirement. And the zoning board of appeals unanimously denied those variance requests. As part of the record tonight, I will submit the minutes from the zoning board of appeals application. I hear tonight that they had gotten opinion from the town attorney that this application does not need a variance. Obviously, that's not the opinion the town or the applicant had three months ago, but now that they did not, were denied at ZBA, they've come back with this argument. And I did listen to them read the memorandum for Janice Small. And I think what's important to realize is that in this application, by the applicant's own admission, they are tearing down and removing every existing building on the site. They're not reusing the buildings that are there. They're taking it down and they are removing the building. If that's the case, the regulation that's applicable to this situation is 6.13.13. That regulation says, nothing in this section shall permit the reconstruction of a nonconforming structure which has been intentionally taken down unless the new structure complies with all the provisions contained in these regulations. In this case, because they are removing the structures on that property, they are required to comply with the provisions of 6.13.13. They are required to submit to you an application which complies with all the setback requirements, all the sidewalk requirements, and all the landscaping requirements. And the only way they can excuse themselves from that obligation is if they obtain variances from the zoning board of appeals. In this case, they tried that route, they were unsuccessful, but that doesn't mean they get to circumvent the regulations by arguing that they don't need to comply. With that being said, my client does oppose the regulation and I know the commission may view that as anti-competitive. However, when my client came before the commission in 2008, 2009 to get his car wash approved, he was specifically told by the representatives of the city of the town that you need to submit an application that complies with the regulations. Would he have liked to have more dryers and more vacuums and, and more runway and bigger buildings? Absolutely, would have been great with his business. But he was forced to comply with the regulations, just as this applicant should be forced to comply with the regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members from the public in this general area would like to speak on the application?
My name's Anthony Malisi. I'm the owner of 722 North Colony Road. And so I'm the neighbor, but certainly more than 100 feet, I believe. Anyway, I, it's a beautiful building, there's no doubt. I'm just nervous about the traffic on that area. I'm nervous about everything I heard, to be honest with you. I know that it's, it's an eyesore, there's no doubt, and anything would be better than what's there. I just found out about this recently, so that's why I'm here. And I have to say, I oppose it. It's as simple as that. That's all.
Good enough. Thank you, sir. Anyone else on this area? Moving off now to the left side. Anyone on the, any members of the public like to comment on the application? Seeing none. Bring it back to commission members for any, I guess Attorney Lachlan or the applicant, certainly Attorney Lee had made some, made some comments. If you'd like to address those comments?
Certainly. One thing that I would keep in mind before I get to Attorney Lee's comments is that all of the vacuums are within the setback requirement. Three months ago, that wasn't the case. So although we were changing the back along Old Colony Road, similar to what we're doing now, in the front, there were vacuums that encroached the setback requirement from Route 5. So to come back now saying we're relying on a law that we didn't present with our last application is a misstatement. Had Mr. Lee called me, had the applicant approached me, I would have explained that to them. We took the front row of vacuums and moved them south, again, all within the setback. I appreciate Mr. Ryan's comments because he speaks the truth. Those other vacuums that you're worried about that are red are all much closer to the road. That's not the case here. Mr. Lee spoke about Section 613B3, tearing down. That's the abandoning law that I spoke about. When you have a nonconformity that you're abandoning, then you must come back and comply with the regulations. But in this case, it's not our intent to abandon the nonconformity. We are presenting you with a plan. We want to do this. In advance of doing it, we're telling you we want to do this, so we are not abandoning the nonconformity. And then I'm not, I'm friends with Mr. Malisi. We have numbers from the international traffic engineers. Two letters are in your file, one from Mr. Brown and then one from Mr. Hua, who talks about the traffic generation that will result from this use. And it's well within the 100 that would require a traffic study. So the traffic concerns are not there, particularly since we're squaring up the exit onto Route 5 much better, as well as squaring it up in the back and the traffic plan that you've reviewed already. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commission members would like to make any- Commission members would like to make any, any comments or have any questions for, for the commission? Excuse me, for the applicant. I guess my, my comment would be, I appreciate what, first of all, let me start out, I'm not an attorney. And I appreciate your comments and I appreciate Mr. Lee's comments. And I listened to the comments that Mr. Hein made. And quite candidly, I'm still a little bit, I won't say confused, but a little bit uncomfortable with where we are as far as can we, we're tearing down, and I understand we're, you're not abandoning the use. Or you're saying you're not abandoning the use, but the building's being torn down and a new structure is being, you know, being, being proposed. I can understand to some degree your position. I can understand Mr. Lee's position. And I saw the, the letter that we received from, you know, Attorney, excuse me, our corporate counsel, Janice Small. To some degree, that was, when I'm looking at it now, somewhat vague. I would like to see from my position, at least something more definitive from our corporate counsel specifically addressing that issue. Because to some degree, I'm saying, if you're tearing a building down, is that not being abandoned? You're saying, well, I'm not abandoning it because I'm showing, I'm presenting a new building. And as I said, I can perhaps understand that to some degree, but I can certainly understand what Attorney Lee is saying. So, you know, from, at least from my position, I'm not sure how other commission members feel. I would feel much more comfortable with something much more definitive on that issue from our corporate counsel. When I look at your plan, I agree with, you know, comments that were made, that it's significantly nicer than what's there now. As far as all of the vacuums that are, that are out front, do I think there's perhaps too many? However, I can understand to some degree what the gentleman's saying as far as, you know, spacing between the vacuums. I know some commission members are concerned that I've got this building and all these vacuums in front of it. From my position, at least when I'm looking at it, I, I don't necessarily find that all that quote offensive, if you would. Certainly, it's a, it's a very attractive building that you're building. And the vacuums, the building's quite a bit off the road. The vacuums are certainly quite a bit off the road, as I think was, was commented on. There's quite a bit of green space and landscaping there. So, you know, the vacuums, would I like to see a few less vacuums? Yeah. But the fact that they're in the front of the building, I understand why they're in the front of the building. And given the nature of the vacuums, or at least what you've shown on, on the plans, I don't find that, that obnoxious, if, if you would. But I'm not sure how other commission members may feel, and I entertain any comments from them as far as how they'd like to move on this application. Mr. Hein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, personally, I, I like the application. And if I were voting, it would be something that, you know, I, I certainly will look favorably on. My concern is just that I, I think we as a commission have to be very careful that if this were to be approved, that we're on sound legal footing to do so. And so I, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think, I would like a more detailed memorandum possibly from corporate counsel on this, because I think it's something that, you know, I just, I, I think looking at this and looking at the procedural posture of this application and the history behind it, I think it would behoove us to get a more formal and detailed opinion from corporate counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Hein. And other commission members? Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really echo Mr. Hein's comments. You know, I, I do think it's a good application. You know, it's a nice building. I, you know, you're the, you're the business owner. You know how many, you know, vacuums you need, how many you want. And actually, I think it's a good marketing ploy that they're free, because people are going to come and say, hey, I might as well get my car washed while I'm here. So I think that's a good idea. You know, I, I don't think they impact any of the neighboring properties, as some of the comments brought up. But I, I do agree with Mr. Sechter and Mr. Hein and that, you know, the issue with the nonconformity, I think there is some verbiage in our regulations which just needs to be clarified. And if we could do that, you know, just to do it right, I would be okay with that.
Mr. Chairman, am I allowed to speak?
We're, at this point in time, we're having comments from the commission. We'll give you another opportunity if you'd like. Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Mr. Chairman, I would certainly, I'll be brief. I would agree, because the opinion that we received from the town planner was, excuse me, from the town attorney, corporation counsel was on our table when we got here. I didn't have a chance to discuss it. And so I would like further clarification from the town attorney before, as Commissioner Hein said, we go out on that, this. So I, I too would be in support of getting more detail from corporation counsel.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Perrin. It's very sensitive, don't.
I think, I think my colleagues on the board have made a good point in that we have Mr. Lee with one regulation and we have Jim with another regulation. And he's raised enough ambiguity that, you know, in my own mind, I can't say that's right or he's right. They both, they've both made good arguments. And I think that postponing this or holding this over for another month to get a more detailed examination from corporation counsel, which would discuss the relationship of, if any, between those two regulations would be very, would just help us out quite a bit so that we can say yes or no with confidence.
Guess other, other commission members, and I guess just to move this along, if people agree that we should continue it, I think we can just simply say yes. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several years ago, the Connecticut General Assembly, and they passed a revision to Section 8-2, which states that a destruction or a removal of a building that has nonconforming use does not give up that nonconforming use. So I believe our town attorney, our corporation counsel is correct. However, prudence is the best path. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see Mr. Vanoye shaking his head, yes. So I, I think at this particular point in time, the commission is going to continue this application till our next month meeting. But if the gentleman would like to make some final comments before we take a motion to continue it, please feel free to do that.
I guess we'll see you in July. I just wanted to say thank you. I just wanted to point out, though, that as the applicant, I don't, we didn't get a choice whether or not we wanted to apply for a variance. We submitted a site, we submitted a site plan. And the town determined whether or not there were any nonconformities, okay? And whether a variance was required. And they determined it didn't. So I, I just don't want anyone to think that we were trying to circumvent any zoning regulations. That's not the case at all. And we're more than happy to come back next month, get some clarity on it, so that we get the right answer and everybody's comfortable moving forward. That's all. I, I feel like this, just please keep in mind that that property has been there since the 80s. And when I went inside it to do an environmental inspection, we didn't feel safe being inside it, okay? I mean, the gentleman talked about a north wind and while he was eating in the tent, that building is one good north wind away from coming down, okay? So it's really not safe. But thank you for your time and we'll see you in July.
Good. All right, gentlemen, I thank you. And at this particular point in time, I'd entertain a motion to continue this application to our July meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue application 405-22, special permit car wash, G. Gallo, 654 North Colony Road.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting by, with Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
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 And yes, the application's going to be continued to our July meeting. So you, see you, gentlemen, then. Moving on to our agenda, I was a bit remiss. I should have noted item number three, new business, a site plan for GKN Aerospace at 14 Research Parkway. No action was, is requested on that application by the applicant. So that would be taken up at our July meeting. So if there were people here interested in that application, I apologize for not noting that earlier. Which brings us now to item number four, new business site plan, 726 square foot accessory apartment for J. Sabatucci at 3 Westview Drive. The applicant, please come forward to begin preparing for this presentation. And Mr. Allison, would you please note all correspondence for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an interdepartmental referral dated submission May 4, 2022. Inter-office memorandum from Scott Shipman, Water and Sewer Divisions, dated June 2, 2022. And I believe that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. If the gentleman would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Good evening. I'm Justin Sabatucci, 3 Westview Drive. And we're, we're looking to an accessory apartment for use for my mother.
Seems like a fairly straightforward application. Any, I guess commission, well, before I ask commission members, Mr. Puccini, any comments?
No comments. He did receive a variance for the addition. So now he's proposing to come to planning and zoning and receive approval for the accessory apartment.
Thank you. Commission members with questions for the applicant? Seeing none, this is a, it's not a public hearing, but we always do entertain questions from the public. Any members of the public would like to comment on the application? Seeing none, unless you have any final comments you'd like to make, you're certainly not compelled to make any.
Nope, I'm all set.
Okay. At this point in time, I entertain a motion on the, on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept application 212-22, site plan 760, 726 square feet accessory apartment, J. Sabatucci, 3 Westview Drive. Site plan request for a 762 square foot accessory apartment located at 3 Westview Drive dated 54, 2022, subject to one comments and inter-office memorandum from junior engineer Scott Shipman to the Planning and Zoning Department dated June 6, 2020, Ju, I'm sorry, June 2, 2022. Two, final inspection by the zoning enforcement officer. And three, six copies of the approved final plan forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Office.
If I could just make one comment, I believe you said accept instead of approve?
Approve.
Approve.
Sorry.
Good. We have a, we have the application. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes, your application's been approved. Have a good evening, sir.
Thank you, too.
Thank you. It brings us now to item number seven, discussion, an overall discussion regarding density and residence requirements in the town center zone and incentive housing zone overlay district. At this point in time, I will turn this over to you, Mr. Puccini.
Okay, so I included some where we left off in our conversation from the workshop. I included three different options for a possible new sub-district of the incentive housing zone. And I believe I also put in the agenda that we may want to discuss potential market rate in the town center zone for density, as well as potentially getting rid of the retail requirements on the first floor and possibly allowing for residential amenities on the first floor. So if you want to start the discussion, one, option one gives you a couple of different parcels, potentially only allowing up to, I believe it was 40 units an acre, something around there, instead of the 50 in this different sub-district to potentially not allow the 50 density in those areas. So that's option one. I haven't named any of these sub-districts yet.
Sure. Just for the benefit of the, I guess of the public, if you could just get a, a general location of the, you know, of the, of the various sub-districts that are being, that are being proposed?
I know, I should have passed out copies. So the sub-district, option one, would be the corner of North Colony and Hall Ave. So the application, that was before us. And then the corner of Center Street and North Colony Street as well. So directly across the street, that corner, and the Hall Avenue corner. So that'd be option one for sub-district option. And I could pass this around to anybody that wants to, to see the options.
If, I guess if there are any members of the public that would like to, would like to take a look at that, do we have?
I apologize for not printing more. So the sub-district option two would be essentially all of the properties from the corner of North Colony and Hall Ave down to the properties that run along Quinipiac Street to North Cherry Street, with the exception of the Brothers parking lot. So if you can kind of, it's a little bit hard to describe, but essentially all of Hall Ave from North Colony and most of Quinipiac Street from North Colony, with the exception of the lots directly behind the railroad station in green. And then these, option three would just be all of the properties that run along North Colony Street, so that bisect Hall Ave and Quinipiac Street. Then option four would be to allow for 50 units an acre in the downtown core and the North Cherry Street sub-district. So just eliminating the need for another sub-district.
Kevin, just please explain option four again, please.
So option four is just to allow 50 units per acre in the downtown core sub-district and the North Cherry Street sub-district, and not creating another sub-district.
I guess I'd open up this, the discussion from, for commission members to see what options, if any, they'd like to consider. And as far as, I know we were also talking about density and as far as what level of density that we would like or would not like to see in this, in this area. I think as I had, you know, mentioned previously, you know, this is part of our incentive, our incentive housing zone. And in that zone right now, if you're developing under the incentive housing, you can put in 26 units. If you're developing it for market rate, you could, you could put in 30 units. So there's obviously a significant, you know, disconnect here. Certainly if we're looking looking to try to encourage affordable housing, certainly don't do it by having 26 units when you could build 30 units that are market rate housing. So it's, I guess, it's always been my, you know, feeling that what is allowed under our regulations for affordable housing should be at a higher density than what would be allowed in this area if it was just simply market rate. Again, some people may or may not, you know, agree with that. But that's my, I guess, general approach on this. So again, just going for commission members, just for some discussion as far as, you know, the options and what people may or may not consider would be, would be appropriate densities. Because I think clearly, you know, what we have right now, we've, we haven't seen, we've had our incentive housing zone, I think, in place for umpteen years. I can't imagine how many years off the top of my head.
2014.
2014?
Yep.
For the incentive housing zone?
Correct.
Okay. And, you know, we haven't seen any, any interest in that. And certainly, I think density is, is one of the issues. So certainly, we need to do something with that. So again, I just open it up to, you know, commission members with comments. Yes, Mr. Parrott?
I have a question. I have a question. If you look at North Cherry Street, I mean, that seems to be different than the rest of the, the rest of the housing or present stuff, things that are in the zone. And, you know, and that is typified that you've got a relatively small number of structures going up and down that street. And I'm wondering, say that you had the same density as you have for the apartments to the north of the railroad station. Would it, it seems that you could probably, you'd be more likely to have a high density there. You'd be, I mean, I mean, the, of course, the developer's going to have to buy the properties from the current owners. Maybe the current owners are happy with their, the current owners are happy with their properties. They don't want to sell. But then, on the other hand, the value of a property that would have the same density as the apartments to the north would be so great that I think that the potential developer could offer a price that would certainly encourage the people to give up their homes or sell their homes. And, you know, there would be, I think, more of an opportunity to build something.
Thank you. Other commission members? Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Personally, I, I do like option one. You know, at the last workshop meeting, a couple of weeks ago, a week or two ago, you know, my main concern was the corner of North Colony and Center Street and the, right across the street from there. And I think Mr. Puccini said, you know, we would target that as, as 40 density?
Yes.
And I'm, I'm okay with that. And I think the remaining density, we had, had discussed 50?
Correct. 50 for the North Cherry Street section or the downtown core. But Meadow Street was not going to go up to 50, just because of the nature of the, the area.
Right. And I, and I'd be fine with that.
So again, if you could just clarify that? So, so I understand, Mr. Cohen?
So option one, you know, the, the two parcels, right?
Yep, two parcels.
Yeah, with a density of 40.
So that would be 40, and that would be 40 for affordable, 40 for market rate?
This is discussing affordable. So this would be the option one of the new sub-district to only allow 40 units an acre, with the remainder of the downtown core at 50, and then the remainder of North Cherry Street at 50, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
But again, I just maybe, again, sometimes I'm a little bit thick on these. Are we talking about market rate 50, market rate 40? So we're having no difference between affordable or not?
We haven't discussed market rate yet, but I guess we're gonna get there.
All right, so, just, I guess, just so I'm clear, Mr. Cohen, what you're looking at is, or proposing would be for affordable housing. Is that correct? For the affordable within option one, those two blocks that are there, to have that at 40?
Correct.
And then have it at, at 50 for the North, North Cherry Street?
And also the remainder of the downtown core. So this would make a fourth sub-district in addition to North Cherry Street, downtown core, and Meadow Street that currently exist. So this would be a fourth sub-district that would allow for 40, the remainder of the downtown core for 50, North Cherry Street at 50, and then Meadow Street, I guess, we're keeping the same that it is now, if that's correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, other commission, I'm still a little confused with this. And again, I'm just kind of thick, but other commission members that'd like to make comments?
I could explain it again if need be. That's fine.
Sure, if you would, please.
So the incentive housing zone contains three sub-districts currently. So these options would be to create a fourth one that would only allow possibly 40 units an acre instead of the 50 that was potentially being discussed at the workshop, if that makes sense.
No, we have 40 in the red block, in the, in the red squares.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
And then the rest of the incentive housing zone?
The rest of it would be 50, with the exception of Meadow Street sub-district, because that is a, that's currently at 15, I believe. So I don't think you would want to go from 15 to 50 at Meadow Street.
Okay.
I don't believe Meadow Street was discussed as being raised at the workshop from what I recall, so.
Okay. Other commission members?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd like, my preference of the documents you gave us is option two, with the inclusion of the corner of Center and Route 5, primarily because around the gazebo, you have four corners. One corner is a cemetery. That way, if you take option two and add in the, the corner of Center and Route 5, you, you'd grab it from option one, and it would be a more encompassing area. Other than that, I certainly agree with Commissioner Cohen. I mean, I, you know.
What we
I'm just, I'm, I'm more preference to option two.
And again, from a, just so I'm clear, as far as from a density standpoint, what were you proposing, or what would you propose in this area?
I'm going to agree with Commissioner Cohen. I'm not proposing my own numbers.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, and, and if we include that block on, which used to be the old Rubens Building?
Mm-hmm.
And then include, and then have option two, which is, takes up that whole area, which in fact, I I, I find that something that I would certainly support. The density in that area then overall would be 40. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the rest of it, the Cherry Street would be, that would be 50?
Yes.
As well?
And also the rest of the downtown core that doesn't encompass this. I should have brought the sub-district maps again.
Which would be what area?
So that would include the area of North Colony and Center, that little block, and then the Brothers Parking Lot, I believe, that little piece that isn't outlined.
Okay. Other commission members?
I was actually, option two to me, very similar to Commissioner Fitzsimmons in adding that, that space is, is kind of what we were just talking about, too. So I would support that. 40 and 50 is also what I would be supporting.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hein.
Thanks. Just so that I'm clear, are, we are, Commissioner Fitzsimmons, are you proposing to combine basically option one and option two at 40? Okay. I, yeah, I, that's, that's exactly what I was thinking, too. So.
Get bigger.
Yeah.
All right. So that seems to be some agreement from commission members on that. Yes, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, just to add, I'm also supportive of option two with, with Mr. Fitzsimmons' addition there on the North Colony and Center Street. That, that works for me as well.
So just essentially combining option one and two?
Yeah, exactly.
I guess that would be an easy way to say it.
Good math, Jim.
Yeah, exactly. Actually, if I take one and two, I come to three.
I'm looking for page four. We all said, where's page four?
So then we come really down to, if we're looking at this from a incentive housing zone or from a affordable housing density, then it comes back to what are we looking at for market rate? And again, I've always come back to, you know, looking at, to encourage the affordable housing, your market rate should be, you know, should be higher, excuse me, higher, should be lower than, than what we have for affordable housing. So again, as far as discussion on what people feel from a market rate, we should have in the, in this area? I mean, right now, our mark, right now, it's, it's, you know, it's 30. And I think at least, you know, my, you know, my general opinion is I, I don't think 30 is, is going to generate, you know, a great deal of interest in this. I know we did have, you know, we had an applicant that came in, and not that we should, you know, base our, our numbers on, on one application. But we did have an applicant that came in and was looking to, you know, increase, for a market rate housing, you know, to increase it to 50. And certainly the commission felt that at that point, it wasn't, certainly wasn't appropriate, or or felt that we needed to take, you know, additional look at, at the density for the affordable. So I guess I just throw that out as far as what people feel might be an acceptable number on, on market rate housing.
If I understood, if I might, Mr. Chairman, if I understood correctly, market rate should be lower?
Lower, that's correct.
Yeah. The density of, yeah, I mean, so you're doing affordable at 40, at 50, right? Is 45 too low? Were you thinking lower than?
I, I guess, I, I, well, first, just, you know, my, you know, my opinion is, when I'm looking at it, as far as having the affordable, and candidly, on the, on combined blocks two and, combined blocks two and one, if I looked at that and said that that, I would feel comfortable with, with 50 in, in those blocks. I, and other, you know, commission members looking at 40. But looking at block one and two, I would feel comfortable for affordable housing in that area at 50. And then in that same area, market rate housing at 40. And again, that's just, you know, that's, that's just my
Ten lesson.
My, you know, my thought pattern. I, I think that for, certainly for affordable housing, and I suspect anything that would be built here would be apartments.
Yeah.
Would be my, my, my general sense. And there's clearly, I think, a difference between an affordable housing for a developer, between developing apartments and developing housing, you know, single family or condominiums. If you're developing, you know, single family housing, you're developing condominiums, you develop it, you sell it, and you're done. You have a qualified person who comes in and buys the, buys the unit. With an apartment, there's a good deal of administration that goes on with that. Because I, I think, you know, every year, you have a, my understanding, every year you have a, you know, you have a lease. And the individual that's leasing that, you know, apartment would have to qualify as, under the affordability. So, you know, if I'm renting today and I make, my, my, my income is at that level or below the level, so I qualify for affordability, I'm there. But now, if I get a big raise, now all of a sudden, I don't qualify, then I believe I can no longer rent there. So there's a lot of administration that's left with the, you know, with the owner of the, with the owner of the project. There's a lot more. And if you, if we have the density at, say, 40, I, that means you're probably going to have, I don't know, 12 to 15 affordable units. And I'm not sure if, you know, if that's enough for, if, if it becomes just too much of an encumbrance on, on, on the owner to do the property management and, and being able to, you know, monitor everything. So again, I'm looking at, and I think perhaps it, you know, at, at 50 units, it may make it more, more viable. May or may not. I, I don't know. But I, I just, I just think it, it may. So again, I, I would look at one and two, and we would suggest the, the 50 for the affordability and, you know, the 40 for the market. That, that would be my, my, you know, my, my recommendation. And then also, I know we were, haven't talked about as far as, you know, allowing for on the, if someone can be creative, allowing on the, on the first level, allowing for, you know, residential that's more on the, on the back of the property. So you don't have the, the apartment, whatever, right, that's facing right on the street. So there's, there's, you know, perhaps some other use. And, and also to consider to allowing for some additional uses. I know right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Puccini, as far as having, say, professional offices, dental practices, those types of things are, are not allowed.
Yeah, they are not allowed on the ground levels.
On the, yeah, on the ground level. And I think, you know, that that's, you know, perhaps something that we want to consider to perhaps opening up, you know, more uses. We'd certainly like to see, you know, retail, we'd like to see a lot of foot traffic. But realistically, is that going to, you know, is that going to happen? And perhaps by allowing a developer, pretty someone creative to put on the, on the first, first level, you know, apartments, it may make it more beneficial and perhaps more, you know, more cost effective. I, I don't know. I, again, I'm just looking at this and saying, we've had this for a while, and we just haven't seen any, any real interest. And I, I just think we need to be, you know, a little bit more creative to, you know, try to disperse some, you know, some development in this area. So those are my thoughts. I know I've kind of rambled on, but.
Mr. Chairman, I was following you, and I would like to say quickly, I agree with what you said. I like the 50, 40, and I like the idea of revisiting ground, ground level. So I'm, I'm with you on that.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, the, the problem I have with 50, quite frankly, is, you know, again, I keep bringing up bringing up the intersection of Center Street and North Colony, right on that corner, and I, I think fifty right there is too high, just logistically speaking, you know, how would you manage the traffic right there? Now, that being said, I mean, it, it comes down to, you know, the individual application, right? And, you know, we could, you know, approve or deny it based on, you know, traffic concerns. I don't know, honestly, realistically, if, you know, somebody would venture to build affordable units right there with, with fifty density. So, you know, that's, that's my concern. I, I think that, you know, again, you know, would this be a special permit in this area? You know, if, if that's the case, then we can. Okay, so, so then if, if, you know, they come in with a fifty density application, we, we could really get into the traffic situation on that spot, okay?
Yeah, I, I think we can, but I think we also have to, you know, keep in mind, when it comes to affordable housing, there, we don't have all the latitude that we may have under, you know, under, under a special permit.
That's true, too.
Because even, I mean, even with these regulations, if we were to go fifty and forty, whatever we may do, that's still, that's a guide for, at least I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Puccini, that's a guide for someone who is coming in and want to, and wanted to create or develop affordable housing, but they could come in and, you know, look to put sixty units or whatever, and, you know, the ability for the town to say, or to deny that is substantially less than what it is under, under our special permit. So I think to a very large degree, this is, you know, somewhat of a guide. I, you know, we have, you know, several projects, or several developments in town that are affordable housing, and, you know, I, I will say, all of the individuals who came in with those, you know, with those projects certainly didn't come in and just to force something on the town. I think they had, you know, conversations, you know, with the, with the planning department to discuss, you know, discuss their application, and worked with the town to, to put together, you know, a plan that everyone liked. It's not to say that, you know, someone else could come in and, this is what I want to do, and, you know, your ability to control that is, is, you know, substantially less, so.
Okay.
I believe, though, the incentive, excuse me, the incentive housing zone does give us slightly more latitude, because it is, you get tax breaks with that, so if they want to come in as a general.
Yeah, if they want, yeah, exactly, if they wanted to take advantage of some of the tax breaks, but, or the tax incentives.
You're exactly right with a regular affordable development.
But again, those, someone who wanted to put affordable housing in could just, and they weren't necessarily interested in the tax incentives could.
Correct.
Could come and say, here's what I want to do, and we'd have to certainly, you know, consider that very seriously, so.
Okay, thank you, what's that?
Anyone else? You know, this, again, it's not a public hearing, but it's an open discussion, so are there members of the, you know, the public that would like to speak? Please come forward and name an address. And come with some good suggestions.
Jim Wolfe, Economic Development. At the last meeting, we, we talked about the first floor and the different uses, potentially, whether it's amenities for the apartments or retail. I think that's something that, that you could really let the developer decide, as to what he wants, what the project is, and what he's trying to accomplish. The other thing is, at the last workshop, you said, Jim, bring some developers. I have a local developer here, here, and he can answer your questions if you have any.
Well, we're not really looking for questions, we're looking for comments. And I appreciate that, Mr. Wolfe, but quite frankly, I thought you were going to pack the place. We'll be all watching that, believe me.
Good evening, Vincenzo Di Natale, Eight Taylor Lane, Wallingford. So, Mr. Wolfe and I spoke briefly about the regulations, and I just want to get back to how, when you, Mr. Chairman, when you started the conversation about the density and generating interest in the incentive housing zone, you certainly have to be cognizant of the density to have, get some interest. I don't know what that number could be, and it's, that's, that's tough to, how to land on that. As a reference, there is also the town center regulations, were a little different, and that's a lower density, but I think we'd be aware that that works for different reasons, perhaps, when you're working with properties that you're revitalizing and not necessarily tearing down. That's a different scenario, and I think my feeling is what the commission did, when most of you were on that, when developed those regulations for town center, that seems to work. You know, those, however we landed on those numbers, it seems to work. Like, I think that someone could go in and, and successfully have a project preserving buildings, redeveloping, and that combination. When you're looking in the incentive housing, just be very cognizant of the density to gain that interest. I think that's the point that, that he and I discussed earlier and wanted to share with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public. Seeing none, I, I guess I would, would just kind of come back to the commission and, and perhaps try to wrap things up, and I, I think it is the general thought pattern of the commission to create a, create this subzone, which would be what's here as far as one and two, and to have in that area a density for the affordable component of fifty units, and for the market rate at forty units, and that we should also entertain, you know, some, some thought or some suggestions from Mr. Puccini, who I'm sure will, will be very happy to do this, as far as what, some additional uses that we could include, you know, for, for the first floor. And again, some thought to, for residential on the first floor, and how we may handle that, so we don't necessarily have, right on the first floor, facing the street, you have, you know, you have the, you have the apartment, you've got the Venetian blinds and, you know, the plants and the macrame plant holders and, and whatever, staring right on the street, on the, on the first level, and, you know, in this particular area. So somehow that, that perhaps could be, I don't want to say softened, but perhaps, you know, softened, so you, we're still allowing, you know, first floor residential, but where it's not, you know, right on the, right at the street level, where it's, you know, facing the street, so.
So essentially just something like amenities, but not the actual units, like, say, the lobby?
Yeah, some, yeah, something that, Jim, possibly, something like that.
Well, yeah, I mean, that would be great, but I'm not necessarily sure if someone's going to look to do that, but just something so we don't write, so we just don't have, right on, on the street, you have the, you know, facing the street, the apartments on the first floor, you know, in, in this particular, you know, in this particular, you know, this particular area. Those are my thoughts, other commission members? Got a big smile, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
But just to, just to clarify, so the, the market rate you want at forty for the entire town center, is that correct?
No, not for the entire, for forty for.
Because the subdistricts were just for the incentive housing.
For our town, I think for our town, well, at least my opinion, for our town center, right now in our town center, it's thirty.
Yes.
So what I'm looking at is, in the incentive housing zone, in block one and two.
So you're looking at forty just in that subdistrict in the incentive housing zone?
So it's, it's, yes, it's forty in that district, and it's fifty for affordable.
And as it reads right now, the, those subdistricts have a minimum density of twenty and a maximum of twenty-six, so is there a minimum we would want, like forty-six and fifty, something like that, or just fifty, forty?
As far as having a minimum, I, I doubt if we put a minimum in there, no. I guess the short answer is would be no.
I just want to know, in case I rewrite the text amendment that I get it right, so. And the, the market rate for the entire town center, did we come to an agreement on that, or is that a discussion for?
Well, as far as the entire, when you're talking, the entire, the entire town center going up Center Street?
Yes, the entire town center zone for market rate.
Again, from, from my standpoint, because that's not part of our incentive housing, it's whatever, I, I, I would like to just keep it at the thirty and leave it at that. I, I, at least in my mind, I'm looking at, you know, this particular area where you're west of, you know, Colony Street, that, to me, that's the area that needs, we've looked for development in that area, and it just hasn't, you know, it just hasn't happened in that area, whereas you're going up Center Street in that, I mean, candidly, it's a much more, you know, active, much more, I won't say mature area, because certainly, you know, the area in the incentive housing zone is very mature, but there's much more activity going, kind of going up the hill, and that's where we see, you know, much more, you know, retail activity in that, so.
Right.
From my, my position, I'd like to see if we can spur some activity in, you know, what we call, you know, lower Center Street, Hall Avenue, Twenty Piac Street.
So I'm thinking of potentially, I don't know, maybe potentially waiving some of the, the specific use requirements of the incentive housing zone, maybe, something like that, keeping the.
Well, not, yeah, I, I guess not necessarily waiving, but making it more inclusive, perhaps.
Like maybe more flexible.
Yeah, yeah, just look at, you know, some of the uses that we have, and, and just perhaps including some additional, you know, additional uses.
Right.
You can certainly be creative.
All right, that sounds, uh, sounds like, I will come up with a text amendment then, and we will.
Yeah, again, I think this is a, you know, this is a work in progress.
Yep.
I don't expect, quite candidly, you know, when we, when we take it up again, that, I mean, we may or may not act on it, we may have some additional comments, you know, comments for it, but I, I think it's, it's more than a starting point. I think this is our starting point, and we're looking to, you know, move beyond the, you know, the starting point.
Okay, should we, is that, are we set then, I guess?
I believe we're set.
Believe? So moving on to bond releases?
Yeah, if you would take us through the rest of the agenda.
The PNA, Polish National Alliance, finished their site work, went out, did an inspection, everything looked great, so they can have their full bond released.
Yes, we have a motion to release the bond.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we relea, relea, release the bond being held for the PNA at North Plains Industrial Road as recommended by the town planner and requested by the applicant.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, and Mr. Perrin, as Mr. Vinoyt has left the building, if you would please sit in for him for the rest of the meeting, and then voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, and moving on.
Administrative approvals, any questions on those? If not, then ZBA decisions, any questions on those? As far as the, also the zoning enforcement, our report for this month, our zoning enforcement officer was tied up in litigation for the majority of the month, so she will not be able to, she wasn't able to get out a report for this month, and she apologizes for that. If, she said, if you had any specific questions, you can feel free to call her at her office. And did I also include the citations that was given to you by Janice? Did you get that? It was supposed to be in the packet.
The fines for zoning.
When you say citation, the memo for fines and zoning violation?
Correct, yep. If you wanted to discuss that as part of the, have a quick discussion on that, or save that for another time?
Well, I just, I guess I have a question for, for our, just for our corporate counsel, where, you know, it indicates fines are permitted for signage violations and outside storage. I guess my question would be, is outside storage, is that vehicles?
Is that what?
Vehicles, motor vehicles. Was, is that considered outside storage? I mean, we have several nuisances, you know, and I don't feel uncomfortable naming names, because cheap auto rental has been around for a long time and a violation, and.
Yes.
Been out of court, in court, and whatever, you know, they have a substantial number of cars all over the place, and I, I guess I would ask, our, our corporate counsel, is, is that outside storage? There's also another one out on.
Anything that was, is not allowed by special permit as a vehicle sales or dealer would be outside storage, essentially, if it's not screened, so.
So something like, I guess, again, so something like, like cheap auto rental. They have all their cars all over the place, there's another one, very similar to this, in fact, some of their cars are on town property, and all the cars, they're, are all over the place, in violation. Would that be considered outside storage?
Yes, I believe it would.
So I guess if that's outside storage, then I think, quite frankly, we should start taking some actions to start fining them.
Right.
Because we don't seem to be getting any type of action, you know, from them when we issue zoning violations, you know, we, we take them to court, that could take forever. I, I just think that we, we should think, if you would talk to our zoning enforcement officer, look at some of these issues, because there's, there's, there's several of them throughout the town, and then start seriously considering starting to fine people, and maybe, you know, we'll start getting some, some attention, because again, I, you know, with cheap auto rental, I know we were in court, we had, and this goes back probably five, six years, Mr. Fitzsimmons, I'm sure you, you remember it, and there was some result from the court case, which is not being adhered to, and it's just an ongoing issue, and there's, you know, there's several other ones.
Would you want to expand any of the other violations, or, because I think we, we have a lot of violations that we cannot find for, so.
Yeah, I think we would, I'd entertain any, any suggestions from, you know, commission members either tonight, or just, you know, through, you know, comments to Mr. Puccini or our zoning enforcement officer, and as we kind of circle those in, then we certainly can discuss them.
All right, sounds great. Yeah, I believe I already had this discussion with some of the members of the citation, or the ordinance committee, so I think they're aware that we may want to expand our citation ability.
Okay.
And I think as far as anything else on the agenda, any other discussion items that you may want to, questions, or?
Well, there is one, I, we received, you know, a memo that you gave us from our town engineer.
Yes, yep.
And I was, if she was at the meeting, I was going to, I was going to ask her, and it would probably be putting her on the spot, so I'll put you on the spot, and if you could, if you could pursue this, you know, it's the, it's the Wooding, you know, it's the Wooding lot, and I know I was, been very frustrated over the last probably eight, nine months, ten months, just the condition of the lot, and I understand there's, you know, approvals to have it, have it paved and all of that good stuff. I, I don't think that that's going to happen before our three hundred and fifty plus two. You know, when I was, talked to, you know, the, the mayor several weeks ago, probably a month, month and a half ago, he assured me that if the lot was not. a month, month and a half ago, he assured me that if the lot was not paved, as it should be, that all those holes were going to be filled in, so at least it would be leveled, as well as it was going to be lined, and I know he indicated that, well, you know, having the lot lined, you know, that, there's some work that engineering would need to do to lay out the lining and all of that. You know, today's Monday, there haven't been any activity on that lot as of, uh, at least, you know, six-thirty when I drove by it. Uh, you know, we have, uh, our three fifty plus two coming up, uh, starting in, uh, Saturday, and I'd just like to know where that stands, and again, it was represented that that was going to be taken care of by our three fifty plus two, and just like to know, uh, where that is, and if, uh, the engineering department is, you know, can, has its, its layout, uh, if Public Works is going to fill in, you know, fill in the holes, and we're going to have something that looks halfway decent when we have more people come into town than what we have there right now.
Absolutely. I have a meeting with the mayor at eleven o'clock tomorrow, so I will bring that up.
Good luck. Anyone else? Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, and again, I, I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I'm-
No, I could always ask.
Just frustrated with that.
Talk to people, so.
Okay. So, at this point in time, if there's no other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Saying goodbye, Mr. Cohen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, thank you very much.